So we are going to get started with our Ridge Lawn Town Hall Meeting. This is very new for all of us. We generally don't have meetings like this in a virtual format, but this is the first time for everything. So welcome to all of our families and staff members that are here today. I am Mrs. Sataro, and then I'd like to introduce the person that you already know as well.
Hi, Ms. Kazmiric. It's nice to see everyone this morning.
As we're going to be moving through this presentation, we hope to be able to fill in some of the blanks with the information that you've already received. Hopefully, you've been able to watch Dr. Thorne's presentations that he has shared out, as well as look at the different information that's shared out. If you do not know where to find that information, we can walk you through that. It is right on our website. There's a tab that says Remote Learning, so that way, I'm sorry, Updates. Updates, so that way you'll be able to look at that information, and we'll try to keep that as updated as possible for you. So what we're going to do is we are actually going to share our screen with you right now, and we are going to walk you through some slides to go over our back-to-school plan, because we're going to be looking at our back-to-school plan in two different ways. We have our hybrid learners that will be coming back to us in person on certain days during the week. And then we also have our remote learners, and they're part of the online academy. So we're going to walk through all of that, again, hopefully answer your questions, and then probably gather more questions that we need to get back to you on. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the screen sharing, and I'm going to make sure that we are muted except for Ms. Kazmiric. Okay. I almost ended the meeting for us. That would not be good. I'm going to move this over. Okay, as we move through our presentation today.
Mrs. Sataro, it's still showing the Zoom box. I think you selected Show Tab instead of Show Screen, possibly.
Let me go, and hold on for one second. Is it on your screen right now? Nope. Do you have it at this point, my friends?
You're still seeing just the Zoom.
Okay, for, let me go back out. Can you go ahead and share it all, Ms. Kazmiric?
Yes, if you go ahead and give me the permission to do that, then I can share my screen.
All right, you are good to go.
Okay. Okay, does that look like the full-screen slides then?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay, so again, this is our Town Hall Meeting, and today's Wednesday, August 12th. And as we move to the next slide, you know us, Mrs. Sataro and Ms. Kazmiric, so we are glad to be here with you this morning. And as we move into the next slide, the first thing that we're going to want to do is go over some of the general questions that have been submitted to us, or just kind of frequently asked questions that we want to make sure that you are clear about. So let's dive right in. When does school start? We did have an adjustment to our school calendar that was officially approved by the school board last evening. So school has been moved from this upcoming week to Monday, August 24th. On August 24th, our online academy, our remote students will be starting back officially online with us that day. Monday, August 24th, will also be our Group A. It will be coming in-person to school. Group B will be at home that day. We will go over our schedule in a little bit, but then Group B will come to school officially on that Tuesday. We are looking at the same times. So in terms of student attendance, it will be 8:10 to 3 o'clock. As always, those students that are participating in breakfast here at school, we would like those students to arrive at 8 o'clock, so that way they can start the day with breakfast before we get into the rest of our day. We are going to have very busy days here at school for our hybrid learners. Since those students will only be here two to three days a week, we want to make sure that we maximize that time as much as possible. 8:10 to 3 o'clock will also be the online learning times for the students in the remote academy. In terms of August 17th and August 18th, just like we've done in the past, we've done a 1:30 dismissal on that first day of school. We will be doing it that Monday and Tuesday, because essentially we have two first days of school, since we have our Group A coming on Monday and our Group B coming on Tuesday. Another important information to note is in the past, we had Wednesdays at the end of the month that were early dismissal Wednesdays. We will not be doing those days at this point, since we want to make sure that we have those full days of attendance when we can have our students in person. Breakfast and lunch. Breakfast and lunch will be served for all students. For our students that are the hybrid students, the day that they are here in person, they will come in the building, they will pick up their breakfast, and they will be having breakfast in the classroom. For the days that students are not here, we will be coordinating a schedule, so that way breakfast and lunch are sent home with those children, so that way they would have it on the off days. For the students that are remote learners and participating in the online academy, breakfast and lunch will be available as well for pickup. We are looking at a bulk food pickup that will be scheduled with you. In terms of what that would look like, if you are picking up breakfast and lunch over the summer, we do have that scheduled two days a week. For example, families would come on Tuesday and pick up breakfast and lunch for Tuesday and Wednesday, and then they would come back on Thursday, and on that day they would be picking up breakfast and lunch for three additional days. So we're looking at something very, very similar to that, and when we have that information, we'll be sharing that out for specifics. In terms of, we talk about the academic learning, of course, but we want to make sure that we also focus on our special area classes. We want to make sure kids have as many opportunities as they can, because this will look very different than what things looked like in the spring. So in terms of our hybrid students that are coming in, they will have four sections or four classes of physical education, one of art, and one of music. Now, these will be spread out over a two-week period. So since the hybrid students will be in the building two to three days a week, a period of two weeks would really look like one person, or a one week of in-person instruction in a typical school year. Art and music will be held in the classrooms, so the teachers will be coming to the classrooms to deliver that instruction. For physical education, we want to have physical education outside as much with weather permitting. That way it will give the children a chance as well to be able to take off their masks at that time. For the online academy students, you see that it looks exactly the same way. Over that same two-week period, they'd be receiving four sections of PE, one of art and one of music. Art and music, the instruction will be provided by the same teacher that they would have had inside Ridge Lawn. PE will have its own dedicated remote teacher that will be working with both Ridge Central students as well as Ridge Lawn students. We will be providing Chromebooks for all students, and when we say "all students," we mean pre-K through 5th grade. So what will happen is we will have a device that will go home with all students. We will be scheduling pickup days for that on August 20th and 21st, so that would be next Thursday and Friday. Those pickup times will be scheduled, and we will be sharing that out with you. We're in the process of finalizing that schedule. Our hybrid students will be asked then to keep their Chromebook in a protective sleeve that we're giving them. That Chromebook will go home with them every day and will come back with them the next day that they are in-person learning, since they will need it at home for their instruction on their non-school day. We ask that it gets charged at home every night and then brought back to school with them. Of course, for our online academy students, they will have their device. We will also be preparing materials to be sent home, such as textbooks. As much as we have available for the 20th and the 21st, it will be sent home. However, with everything that's going on with COVID-19, we're having a lot of deliveries that are delayed, just like many, many school districts, that we don't have all of our materials yet. So we may need to set up an additional pickup day for our remote learners. Your child's teacher, that's what we all want to know when we get to August. Who is my teacher going to be? I know all the kids on this recording right now are asking that, too. We are working on that as we speak. We plan on mailing out our Welcome Back mailers at the end of this week. What we need to be able to do is assign all of those teachers, and we have some changes with enrollment going on that we are taking account. So your child's teacher will be sent home. There will definitely be time. We want to be sure that we acclimate everybody back into getting-to-know-you activities and focusing on our social-emotional health as we move forward. Now, for those online academy kids, you will have your own homeroom teacher, too. That will be your remote teacher. So a question was posed is for the remote learners. Well, I have more than one teacher. You'll have a homeroom teacher, just like you would have had in school, so there will be one main teacher that will be responsible for your grades, your assignments, all of your learning activities. They, too, will be working on all of those lessons, as well as social-emotional learning. And this really big adjustment to what remote learning is, we had a taste of that in the spring, but it's going to look very different coming into this year. School supplies is a big question out there, and I totally get that. We are not adjusting the school supply list, because we're really hoping at some point we have everybody back with us. Everyone is back in school when conditions permit. What we do want to keep in mind is we understand some of those things are not available right now. So please don't worry about that. Please find the items that you know your child's going to need to get going. We are going to need those markers and notebooks and folders and things of that nature. For our hybrid students, that's a lot of stuff to bring to school. So we know you can't all bring it on the first day. You can't carry all of those things. So parents, we ask that when they come back, you send what could fit in your child's backpack, and if it all doesn't fit, just send it on different days. It does not all need to come in at exactly the same time. And you really want to kind of prioritize those main tools that they'll need while we're here in school. For our online academy students, those students will need access to the same school supplies, but keep in mind some of those things that teachers may ask for, like Kleenex or paper towels or things like that. Use your discretion. That's what you need at home, since they won't be here in person. But we do want to make sure that we do have those school supplies. Extracurricular activities. Typically, at the elementary building, our extracurricular activities don't really begin until about November anyways, so they would not be scheduled at this time. As we move forward into the school year, we are definitely going to assess what we can do in the safety protocols that are given down to us from the state and from the Illinois State Board of Education. However, students that are in the online academy, if we are offering after-school activities, you would absolutely be able to participate as well. We would need parents to provide transportation for that, but otherwise, if we are offering it, that is open to all of our students, no matter what program you're participating in. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kazmiric.
Thank you. We'll move into talking specifically about some of the questions that we received on the hybrid model. So our students that are coming into school, starting on Monday, August 24th, and then our second group on Monday, August 25th. So currently, we have our students assigned into two separate groups. You'll be receiving your letters that we sent out on Friday, and they will identify what group you're going to be part of. And we're looking at it as a Group A or a Group B. And for our Group A, they're going to be split from last names A through the letter J. So it's our first half of the alphabet that will be starting school on that Monday. And we have decided, since we ended last year with such strong positivity around our Eagle and Eddie and our Eagle Walks, and so many of our Ridge Lawn students were demonstrating our Eagle Strong, and it became our new hashtag, that that's how we're going to name our A group. So our Group A will become our Eagle Group. And they're going to be designated in the building with our color white. So our school colors are blue and white, and we split them in half, so that way we can help to really keep track of our A group and our B group. And then their attendance will be in-person on Mondays, Wednesdays, and every other Friday, and they will be participating at home for remote learning on those off days. And then the B group is the second group with last names from K to Z, and they'll be labeled as our Strong for Eagle Strong, our second group, and they'll be designated with the color blue. And their attendance will be on the opposite days, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and then those every other Fridays. And there'll be a calendar that will be sent home with the mailings for our remote families that will show the first trimester of what we have A days and what we have B days. The families are, the schedule's very consistent, but you will note that on certain days, like when we have October here, where there's no Monday schedule on Columbus Day, it's our typical day off, like we always have, that group will make up that time on that Friday schedule. So that way, all the students, no matter if you're in Group A or Group B, will have the same number of attendance days for the first trimester. We're hoping that come November, everything can be back to normal. We'll have everyone back in the building. But if we do need to stay in a hybrid model, A and B will send out a second calendar very similar to this for what second trimester will look like when we can assess and make those decisions. So thinking about what it's going to look like for a typical day for our students when they're in the building, it will look very similar to what we normally have when the students aren't here, just with about half to a third of the number of students. So they'll start their morning, coming in a door, getting their breakfast, and taking that to the classroom, and they'll start their day with their teachers in the room. And that's where we'll talk about the SEL that Mrs. Sataro has already mentioned. Really talking about Welcome Back to School, getting to know one another. How was your summer? What did you do? What are you looking forward to in school, or maybe what do we need to talk about to build that comfort level when they're in school? The bathroom break that's in here won't be the same time for all classrooms. What we'll do is each group will be assigned a specific bathroom at a specific time throughout the day. And really, we're doing that so we can maintain that social distancing and make sure that the bathrooms can be sanitized between classrooms going in, so our custodians will know what group is going into which bathroom at what time, and it can be sanitized in between groups. Now, we know emergencies come up, and there'll be things of that nature, but this way, every single class, K through 5, will have that time to go and take that break to the bathroom, and then also will help stretching their legs. Every group will have an hour of literacy instruction and an hour of math instruction throughout the day. Again, they'll be at different times. We kept our vowels to make it really authentic for our hybrid learners here. So they'll have their literacy, math instruction, and science and social studies, just like normal. But some of the things that we've added into here are like hand-washing breaks before the students have lunch. So the lunch will be in the classroom, but there will be time for them to take a break, wash their hands, so that way everything is clean and sanitized before they remove their masks to eat. Every group will still have a lunch and recess, like they typically do, 20 minutes for lunch, 20 minutes for recess. But then another addition you'll see is outside mask breaks. So what we're going to do is for 15 minutes, and those will kind of vary depending on what their recess time is, what their PE time is. But we don't want the students to be sitting in those classrooms with those masks on for that extended period of time. So there'll be scheduled mask breaks for the students to go outside, maintain social distancing, and remove their masks. And one thing we will be providing for our students are lanyards for them to wear, so that way they can hook their mask to that while they're outside taking that break, so they still stay clean and stay with that student. It's not on the ground. They're not getting mixed up with other masks, so that way each student can keep track of their own. Some safety procedures that we've put into place moving forward. We've really looked at our shared spaces that our students use. So throughout Ridge Lawn, we pretty much go in a big square around our courtyard in the middle, and all the hallways will be turned into one-way hallways. This way, students will all be walking in the same direction, and we won't have to worry about them crossing paths throughout the building. And we're also placing social distancing signs and different markers. So there'll be labels on the floors to indicate where the six-foot marks would be, which directions the hallways are going, and where to stop if they need to, what drinking, the drinking fountains that will be closed, maybe what sinks might be closed, so all of that will be labeled. They'll also have their assigned bathroom, so that way certain students are using certain bathrooms, again, to keep track so we can sanitize. And there'll be sanitization of those high-touch areas, doorknobs, light switches, things of that nature, where we might have multiple students touching it. Those will be sanitized frequently throughout the day. And then within classrooms, we're also maintaining that social distancing. Teachers will be provided signs. We also have some special teak that they'll be putting on the floors if they need to, to mark off where to stand to maintain that social distance. And the teachers have already started coming in this week and working very hard about removing any excess furniture, so that way the students do have as much space in that classroom as possible, so they can spread out while they're in there. So some extra desks have been removed, maybe some larger furniture pushed up against the walls differently, so that way those students really have their own individual space to maintain that six-foot distance. And then again, sanitizing those high-touch areas, and there'll be a sanitizing spray that will come in with our custodians every night and spray down the classrooms, so that way when we go from our A group to our B group, everything is clean and it's ready to go for our group the next day, no cross-contamination. Thinking about arrival and dismissal with our hybrid students, one thing Mrs. Sataro and I keep reminding ourselves, it's going to look very different, because we'll have half to a third of our students coming on those days with the A group, B group, and then the students that are choosing to stay home for remote, or for the online academy. So parents will be given a notepad when you come for pickup, and that will contain self-certification forms. And there'll be a big stack, and you'll get one per student, and that form will need to be completed each morning and sent to school with the child. So they'll just tear off that top piece of paper after they fill it out, and the student will come with that, and that will have the questions, similar to if you've gone somewhere else. If they ask you, "Have you had a fever of 104 or greater? Have you had a sore throat?" Any questions like that? Well, you'll answer down the column, just circle, and then that will come with the students. That will be turned in at their assigned door. This is something different we're doing this year. Before, every student would come in whatever door was closest to them. Now, in your arrival packet that you'll be getting in the mail, there'll be an assigned door for students, so that way they're coming into the door that's closest to the classroom to really eliminate crossing each other's paths in the hallway and getting in the door and in the classroom as safe as possible. Once the students come to the door, they'll hand in that form, and their temperature will be taken by a staff member. At that point, the students will enter and go into the classroom, or any students that do not have their self-certification letter when they show up will have a designated door. It's Door W3, so it's on the west side of the building, back kind of closer to our playground area facing the field. And at that form, we'll have staff, at that door, I'm sorry, we'll have staff members with the form, so they can still be completed, and the students will still have their temperature taken. And then it's a dismissal. It'll look very similar to arrival. The students will be exiting from that same door they entered, which was different from what we've done in the past, and then each homeroom will have a designated section near that door for parents to wait. So that way, we know that if your child's in Room 206, they're going to enter from this door, and this is where the teacher will be directing them, so the parents can wait there. And there will also be a slightly staggered dismissal procedure, so we don't have three classrooms all exiting the door at the same time. So there might be a minute, a couple seconds in between each, so that way the students can walk out to maintain that social distancing. And then we're asking families as well, when you're outside for pickup, to practice social distancing in that area. So that way, students can come out easily, identify their parents, where they're at, join them, and then exit the school grounds in a safe manner. And here is what the map will look like. This will be included in the packet. So we have 1st grade coming in up through our front door, so that way they can come in the hallways and come straight down to their classrooms without passing any other grade levels. This section is the only exception where we'll have a two-way hallway, and that's because it's such limited space, and it's right there at the end. And the hallway is wide enough. It's an eight-foot hallway. So when students are over here, we'll encourage they stay up against the walls, so that way they're still maintaining that six-foot of social distance. And these will be where our 2nd and 3rd grade students will enter. Over here, which was normally for our primary students to enter, we're going to have our kindergarten and some of our 5th grade classes enter, so that way they can come in through the east side of the building and enter into their classrooms right here that are close by. And on the south entrance, we will have two of, one of our, I'm sorry, kindergarten classes, or other kindergarten class, and our 4th grade classes can enter, so that way they can come in right here and go to their classrooms without passing on the other grade levels. And then pre-K will be entering through their own classroom. So there's already exterior doors, so pre-K will come in on the west side of the building and go straight into their rooms, so they are not crossing paths with any other students. And here is that W3 door that I mentioned, where students that do not have the certification letter will be directed. Typically, we discourage from walking around the backside of the building during arrival, but we will be having staff members stationed out there in the morning, and staff members stationed out in front for student safety, so that way where students are dropped off, we can get them to that door as quickly as possible. So if they're dropped off at the end of the car rider line, they would be able to walk around the back of the building to enter if they're in a back door. Another question that was posed to us, well, what will be provided for the students that are in-person for the hybrid model? So a few things that we'll be sending home with our students, and they'll go back and forth from home to school every day, will be two masks, so that way they can arrive with a mask and still have a mask at home to be cleaned and sanitized to come back when they return on their next day of attendance. Students will also be provided with a Chromebook, a charger for at home, and then that protective sleeve. So when the Chromebooks go into the backpacks, it'll keep them from being scratched and give them a little protection when they're in there. And we also have, similar to like a luggage tag, that we'll be able to hook on students' backpacks. These will be identified as that white group and the blue group, so they match with their school colors. So that way, we know on the A day, we have students with the correct tag that are walking to the building, especially on those Fridays, we're thinking this could be helpful, so that way we know if it's an A day or a B day when they start to alternate. And then some things that will be provided for the students that will be remaining at school, the teachers will keep in their classroom. We have some plastic storage containers that the students will be to put supplies in, since they won't have that desk where they can keep their materials like normal, because they'll be sanitized every night. So this will be the students' individual plastic bin, and they're clear, so we can label them with their names with a permanent marker. They can keep all their school supplies. We've also purchased some drawstring backpacks, where the students will be able to put their textbooks. They fit nicely in there. And they also hang nicely over the back of the chairs, so that way they can keep their books with them during the day. And students will also be provided water bottles from the school. This is pretty exciting. We had water bottle fillers installed by all of our bathrooms, so that way students won't have to use the drinking fountains. Those will be turned off, since they can't be sanitized in between each student having a drink of water. So instead, they'll be provided a water bottle and can go to the water bottle filler. They just have to hold the water bottle underneath, and they'll be able to keep that here at school.
Okay, that was a lot to take in, everybody. And when we're talking about our hybrid students versus our remote learners that will be in the online academy, just so that our families on the call know, we have probably about 70% of our students that are participating in the hybrid model, and about 30% of our students that are participating in the online academy. So that's where our breakdown lays out, and that's what we're really talking about when students are coming to school. It will look so different. We will have less people here on the school grounds and in the school building. And moving to the hybrid model by the district was a very concerted decision to make sure that we try to have that in-person learning when we can, but still keep, but in smaller groups to keep it safe for everyone that is here at school. Okay, we're going to dive into the remote learning a little bit, otherwise known as the online academy. The first thing we want to say is this is going to look different than what happened in the spring. When we left school here on March 13th, and we haven't had students in back since, we really had to make a big shift, like all districts had to do, where we shifted to online learning. And it was very successful, but that being said, moving into the fall, we're looking at a more structured approach. There will be a daily schedule for the students to participate in, much like if they were in-person, their school day would be looking like an 8:10 to 3 o'clock day. What the Illinois State Board of is requiring for all students, that they have a minimum of five instructional hours. So we really need to take out, obviously, things like lunch don't count and bathroom breaks and things of that nature. But we're really looking at five hours of instruction for students. So one of the important things for our online academy students is there will be daily attendance taken. There will be a means by which the remote teachers are taking attendance, and that's really going to be that 8:10 in the morning. So students, in this particular situation, it won't just be the way that it was in the past where they had a lot of on-their-own time, and maybe they might be working at different portions of the day. Our online students, we're looking at participation from 8:10 to 3 o'clock, just like if they were in-person. So the teachers will be taking attendance at 8:10 in the morning. If we have students that are not online and participating with the teacher, there will be follow-up by the school office. The secretaries will be doing that calling, just like if your child wasn't in school that day. We are looking at more of a traditional grading. As you know, in the spring, we looked at more of a complete-type situation. It was either a pass or incomplete grade students were given. Well, that looks very different now. It will be traditional grading. So if your children are in the older grades, you see those As, Bs, Cs, of course. And in the younger grades, we have our Es, Ss, and Ms. So we will be looking at grading. Learning for our online students and our in-person students. Our teachers will be working together to coordinate that. You may think that the online students might be moving at a faster pace because they're going to have that online instruction five days per week. But you also have to keep in mind, for those kids that are here in the building with those smaller groups, teachers' progression will look a little different rather than if they had 24 kids with them, if they only have about eight or nine. So we're really looking at the online teachers as well as our hybrid teachers to be coordinating their progression. So that way, their lessons are really similar in nature and the same content is being followed. We don't want one group to get really far away from the other because we might have an instance too where a child has to move from the hybrid situation into the online academy. So we want to make sure that we coordinate their progression as much as possible. We definitely have questions regarding assessments. Assessments are going to look very different. But at the same time, our online teachers will be informally, as well as formally, doing assessments. Please keep in mind whether kids are in-person or whether they are going to be remote. Those first couple of weeks are going to be really important for all of us to get to know each other again and to really identify where those learning needs are. So teachers will be informally working with children to really assess that information. And depending on grade levels, that will look different because obviously, we know we don't do the same things with fifth graders that we would do with kindergartners. Our communication is going to be so important. We want to make sure that parents are with us along the way, especially for those online academy students, since you won't physically be here with us. Please make sure that you are communicating, that you are establishing a routine and a schedule at home for your child to participate in this daily instruction, to be reaching out to teachers. Our means of communication, definitely email. I know many, many parents have such positive feedback regarding Class Dojo. Please make sure we're going to be setting up our new classes, that you are linked in online so that way, you can reach out to us. Communication too. We do ask, as you're communicating with teachers, especially in the online academy, and it's because we noticed some differences in the spring, that we're communicating during regular school hours, regular business hours. Since we had students learning at all different times in the spring, oftentimes, students were online late at night and they were asking questions. We want to make sure that this, again, reflects more of the traditional school day as we move forward into the online academy for the year. And for children that need additional support, that's where that communication is key too. We would want parents and teachers talking to each other about what's working and what's not working, and how we can make those adjustments. And we won't know that until we start getting into this and we see what children's needs are. What is the day going to look like? Like I said, we're looking at an 8:10 to 3 o'clock day. Your child will have that assigned remote teacher that is their main teacher, their homeroom teacher. We're going to do that 8:10 check-in for attendance, and we're hoping to start with morning meetings and a review of what the day looks like. I know someone had posted in chat, well, I know what the schedule looks like. We would ask the teachers to share that out with you. Once they can really set up their day and they see their classes, they're just as eager as you to know who their students are and to be putting their classes together. So that will be shared by the remote learning teacher. And there's some fancy words out there that people are using, a synchronous and asynchronous instruction. That synchronous instruction is that live instruction, much like what Ms. Kazmeric and I are doing right now with you, we're interacting with you. So during the course of that school day, we're asking for two and a half hours of synchronous instruction. That could be just like this where we're interacting. It could be morning meetings. It could be live instruction with the teacher. The teacher might be working with the students in a whole-group situation, or maybe it's going to be a small-group situation as well too. And that live instruction just doesn't come from the homeroom teachers. That will be coming from the art teacher, the music teacher, the physical education teacher. Some of our students will be working with their EL teachers online. So that is definitely another area for that instruction. Some of our students that have special services will be working with those teachers and staff members too, to deliver those services. For example, if a child has an IEP and they do need to have some specialized services, that will be delivered online as well too. So we ask that if you have questions, you work with your specific teachers on that, but that will definitely be delivered in that manner. And then going for the asynchronous, that really kind of means self-paced. You're doing it independently. So in the course of the day from 8:10 to 3 o'clock, a teacher will be signed in with her students at 8:10. They may be working together for a portion of that hour. They may then go off and do some asynchronous learning where they're working on assignments. They might be watching videos. They might be doing online programs and assignments. And then they come back together during that day. So really, it comes about to 30 to 40% of the day is live, and then about 60 to 70% of the day is more independent or asynchronous. And here's an example of what a typical day could look like, just to kind of give you a flavor of it. We would start in the morning with that morning meeting, focus on social-emotional learning. You might have about a half an hour of whole-group English-language arts instruction, or then we may be breaking down into small groups. Obviously, we need to build breaks into this too. So the teachers will be building in times, just like if you were here in person where you'd have to have breaks. There will be special-area classes. There'll be at least one every day. And then obviously, time will be built in for those students that might need some different interventions or additional programs. Time will be built in for lunch, just like if you were here at school. And there could be additional whole-group time for math, small-group time. And we want to make sure that we build in time for science/social studies as well too. So that's really just an example of what a breakdown could look like for the schedule. So, we're kind of a summary point now. For, we have two different groups. We have the hybrid group, and they are going to be working on that A and B schedule. And then we have the online academy students that are five days a week. One question that I don't know we formally answered was those students that are on the hybrid schedule, one day they're in-person, the next day, that is not an off-day where they're not participating. The students will be receiving instruction from their teachers on their in-person day and will be providing assignments on that next, for that next day when they're independently learning at home. So those at-home learning days should still be essentially a five-clock-hour day of instruction that they're participating in. Now, that does look a little bit different because they're learning on their own and independently and following up on things the teacher gave them. So there's not as much of a set schedule, but the important thing that we will be communicating out is we're taking attendance on those days too. So those at-home days for our hybrid learners, we will be collecting attendance information, and we will need families to complete a form for us every day. And that is our check-in for the day to make sure that the children are learning at home. If we do not have a check-in from a family, then that will be a phone call home too. Again, just to like to check in to make sure that they are safe and at home and participating. And that is something that we're working on developing, and we will share that out with you. And we will continue to communicate updates and changes. School Messenger is fully updated so that way, we have all of our new students enrolled for the 2021 school year. And we will be updating Class Dojo as well. And as we move through this very, very fluid situation that we're living in with COVID-19, please know that the district will be constantly monitoring the changes. We'll be constantly reflecting on guidance from local and state officials, as well as federal, to make sure that we are making the choices for our students and staff here at Ridge Lawn School in Chicago Ridge School District, that we are doing everything that we can for their health and their safety as well. So that will always be a fluid situation, and things are continually subject to change. So please be patient with us as we adapt through this. That being said, we have come to the end of our presentation. We appreciate, we did have, I'm looking at the chat box. I want to make sure if we had a couple of questions that I did not yet get a chance to answer in here. The certified form. The question that's being posed is what is a certified form? And what is going on on the 17th and 18th? Well, for you, you don't have to worry about the 17th and 18th. You're still on summer break on those days. On the 20th and the 21st, we will be scheduling that Chromebook pickup. And at that time, for all students that will be hybrid students, you will get a pad of paper that's a self-certification form. And every day, when your child comes to school for in-person learning, you would answer those questions, and it's just a quick yes or no question. If you are indicating that your child does have a temperature of 100.4 or greater, or that they're experiencing any of the COVID symptoms that are listed or been in contact with someone that has had a COVID diagnosis within the past 14 days, you do need to stay at home. Our school nurse also will be monitoring situations because, you know, all of this is a very tricky situation as we move forward. We'll be moving into cold and flu season, and it's allergy season all the time. So we want to make sure though, that we're making the right decisions for our kids. And if your child is feeling sick and they are having any of those experiences or symptoms, you do need to keep them home because we want to make sure that we protect their safety as well as everyone else. And if we do find ourselves where we have a student that is sick, our nursing staff in our office will be reaching out to you. And we do ask that parents make sure that their numbers are all updated with the school so that way, we can get to you as soon as possible for that too. A question is, if they have asthma symptoms, do they need to stay home? No, that would be a regular medical symptom that that child has that's not related to COVID. So definitely, we would want those students to be participating here in school as long as it's not COVID-related. And in terms of teachers and Chromebook schedules, thank you guys for posting on here. This is a good Q and A time for those things that maybe you didn't hear us say during the presentation. When the students are home, they will be learning. Some of that learning will be online. Some of it will be other assignments. So the teachers will be giving them assignments when they're in-person to do at home the next day. You will be receiving information for your teacher's assignments, whether they're hybrid or whether they're remote learners in that mailer that the offices will be putting together at the end of the week. So it will have a teacher's name on that, whether you're hybrid or whether you are remote. In terms of the times for Chromebook pickup, we hope to have those established by the end of this week too, to share that out with everyone as well. If anyone has another question, please feel free to type it into the chat box. In terms of the specific signs and symptoms, those will be the ones that will be listed right on the self-certification form that will go home. As you've probably seen in a lot of places you've gone to or things that you've seen online, there are some pretty standard questions that are asked looking for COVID symptoms. So that will be on the self-certification forms. In terms of student class size, the student class sizes are going to vary. We're looking at class sizes from about seven to 12 students on average for the class. So that is definitely very doable in our classrooms. The teachers will have the desks. It looks like a very traditional classroom when you think about the old-school-type classrooms where desks are spaced apart. They're facing forward. It's a very different environment for us to be going in. Again, that's why the hybrid model is a good model in order for us to reduce class size. In terms of any students that are going to need meetings for whether it's a 504 plan or an IEP, our special ed director, Mr. Hilligans, will be planning those meetings. So he would be the contact person for that. So please, if you have questions regarding special ed, reach out to Mr. Hilligans. Most of our meetings, though, please keep this in mind, we will be doing them virtually like this. We won't be doing things in person. We will be limiting entrance to the buildings. So it wouldn't be a situation where we're going to have visitors coming into the buildings. We do ask that if you do need to talk to a teacher or you do need to talk to Ms. Kazmeric or myself, that we talk on the phone. Or we will be able to schedule Zoom meetings just like this so that way, we can see each other as well too. In terms of remote teachers being available during asynchronous times, that could, that's a discussion to have with those teachers or those special services providers. So we also do have our paraprofessionals that will be available too to provide additional support if needed. So that could definitely be coordinated with, something like that would definitely come from Mr. Hilligans as well as a special service director. Our supply lists are posted on our website. Actually, in a minute, I might ask Ms. Kazmeric to screen share again, and we can take you a walk, take you on a little walk through our website to show you not only our school supplies, but that other information where Dr. Thorns is posting. So that way, you can keep an eye on that as well too. The student, the hybrid students will have e-learning on the days that they're not in school. As appropriate, we want to make sure some of it will be on a computer and other things will be other assignments that the teachers have given to them. In both models, both hybrid model and remote learning model, the EL team is currently working on how they are going to be providing services. And how will testing happen in regard? And the testing is going to definitely be evolving. We're going to be looking at doing observational, you know, doing these meetings. You can definitely get a lot of information. Talking to kids are definitely will be more traditional means too. We'll be using our Google Classroom platform as we have done in the past. So Google Classroom will be our main platform for students to engage in as well as posting all of those assignments. The Chromebooks do not come with headsets. That's a really good question. I think on most of our school supply lists, the teachers do request either earbuds or headphones. Ms. Kazmeric, do you want to go ahead and screen share, and we'll take a walk through?
Like we went through the questions, so I have it ready to go. So here you can see, when you go to the district website, there are a couple of different options for you up at the top. So this would be where you could go for any reopening updates that are posted. So if you click here, here are the last two updates that Dr. Thorns has posted to the school website, as well as videos when he posts that he records of himself answering some questions. And he also has documents with frequently asked questions. So things that have been coming up maybe from a couple of parents, possibly from across the district. He has links here so that way, you can get the information there as well. And these are the information that's typically posted after the board meetings or anytime. It's also the same communication that he would be sending out via school messenger. So what he's posting there, you can also access on the school website. From the district website, you can get to Ridge Lawn's page. And when you go to Ridge Lawn, we have some of our overall information that's similar to what you've seen in years past, information on registration and different things that we have. We post our calendars and our updates. And then when you scroll down, here is where you can see your school supply lists. So if you click on our school supply list link, So if you click on our school supply list link, we have the new list for this year posted. They're updated. They were also sent home at the material pickup for our families last year when you came to the gym to return any Chromebooks that were borrowed and pick up supplies from the classrooms. They were in the bags. And here are the same links as well. Again, with that understanding that there may be certain things on the lists like different cleaners, hand sanitizer that might be hard to come by right now. So we are aware that maybe not everything will be purchased. And again, you can see there are some things, boxes of Kleenex that take up a decent amount of room in backpacks. So that's what we were mentioning before. Things like their pencils, their crayons, paper notebooks could be important to include on the first day, so they have them here. And some of those other supplies can be sent with them when they return on their following attendance day. Mrs. Sotaro, is there anything else from the website that you would like me to go to?
You know, on our Ridge Lawn page, it is not there yet, but we will be working to update that as well too. This recording or this particular meeting is being recorded. We will be saving that and posting it. And we are going to be asking for one of our translators. This is a lot of information, so we didn't think that during this meeting we would be able to go back and forth to do that translation. We would like one of our translators to be able to translate this meeting, so that way we can save that as well and post that for our families because there is so much information to share out. So please keep an eye on here. We will be posting things on here. But please know our first priority is trying to make sure that we get ourselves all organized and set, so we can be ready to welcome kids back, whether it's in person or virtually. And that is what we're working on right now, but we will be getting all of that other information out to you too. Do we have any other questions that we wanted to post in the chat? We have a question about the supplies for the days they work at home. That's a really great question. Thank you for asking that. In terms of supplies, we'd want to make sure that whatever they're bringing here to school will remain here at school. So if you need to keep some of the supplies at home, for example, some notebooks at home, you might need some additional crayons or pencils or things like that. What we'd like to do is for the students that are coming to school to minimize what goes back and forth. So they'd be bringing their Chromebook every day. They get their take-home folder from us too, their assignment notebook, but that's really just about it that they would be bringing back and forth. So I would maintain a selection of school supplies at home, so that way your students have a space to work at home as well as the tools that they need to work at home. That gets a little interesting if you have multiple children at home. I know that that's definitely been a challenge for all of us trying to coordinate some of those things. So that is definitely a work in progress, I think, for all the families. And we are here for you. As you know, Ms. Kazmeric and I, we want to make sure that we can do everything that we can to help our families and to help our students and staff. So definitely make sure that you're reaching out to us. The first line is always the teachers, because usually the teachers can answer you sooner than that, but those questions that are bigger than the teachers can answer. We want to make sure that we are here for you and we are supporting you too. So we will press stop on the record button in a couple of minutes, so that way we can process that recording and get it out there. Most likely, we will have this version posted as soon as possible. It will take a little bit to get it translated as well too. So with that, we really, really thank you for your time today. We've been on for about an hour. It seems like it flew by. We are hopeful to a great start to the beginning of the school year and as we said earlier, I think our adaptive, our ability to adapt and pivot in situations and become flexible, we've gotten really good at that. So we will continue to do that and we ask you to be there right with us along the way to make this a good start to the 2021 school year, something we've never seen before and something we hope to never see again. So once again, thank you. And if you need anything from us, you know where to find us.
We're here. It was so nice seeing everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's so nice seeing you guys.
You too, you too. And thanks to the new families that joined Ridge Lawn and are on the meeting today too.
Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
You too. Take care, everybody.
Yeah, miss you guys.
We do too. Tell all the kids we said hi.
Definitely, thanks. They're next to us.
Oh, good.
They're so happy seeing you.
Thank you. That was a nice presentation. That's very good.
Thank you.
Very informational. Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Thank you. That was, that was.
We want to hang out.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Say thank you, Salim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You don't have to do thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.